Take a vote. And those voting for Betsy, Laura. I see hands going up. I see Laura. I see Martha. I see Jill. I see Jan. And I think that's everybody. Okay. Congratulations, Betsy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Chair and thank you for accepting. And so it's yours to take forward.
Sounded a little like romper room.
So I guess we will continue with reorganization. I'm just gonna pull up. Sorry, I was on my agenda, so I don't have. Let me just grab that document. Okay, I'm accepting nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Martha.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor, and this time, I think as we read your name, just say aye. So Laura?
Aye.
Great. Jill?
Aye.
Martha? Do you vote?
No.
Jan? Jan?
Aye.
And me, and I'll say aye. Okay, so thank you, Martha, for being willing to do Vice Chair. So do we nominate Ann again as Secretary?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so.
She's willing.
Nominate Ann as Secretary. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, and then we'll just go through, I think the roster, it's easier than just trying to find the hands. So I'll just read names and just say aye. So Laura?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
And Betsy, aye. Thank you, Ann Teff.
Thank you, Ann. Betsy, question?
Yes.
First of all, I want to welcome Laura so much to joining our school committee. And since we're reorganizing, and since this is so new, I'm wondering. I know some of us have a history, if you will, and are committed to remaining on certain subcommittees that we're on. But I think it might be valuable just to briefly, for Laura's sake, say what the subcommittee is about and what it typically entails.
Awesome. I will do that when we get there.
Thank you.
Jill. So the next position is Warrant Officer. So Laura, Warrant Officer is the person who signs the warrant that has in the past been me. I just do it digitally via the iPad. I am willing to do it again if there's a nomination unless somebody else prefers that job.
I nominate Betsy.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, great. And just, I'll go through. Laura?
Aye.
Yep, Jill?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
And Jan?
Aye.
Right, and myself, aye. Okay. Laura, the next on our list is the Policy Subcommittee, and that is, you know, work on the district policies. It does involve extra meetings. Not too many. It depends on what's coming up. I anticipate with some of the things that are happening that there may be more, a few extra this year. But generally, we meet with our other colleagues around the district and decide on policy measures. In the past, I have done that. I'm happy to offer that to anybody else. I'm wondering if we should go through all the descriptions before we vote one by one so that Laura can see, and maybe she's interested in a certain one. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that sounds good.
We will, we would have the policy. Yes, Martha?
I'm sorry, can we nominate an alternate for the? Oh, gosh.
Oh, thank you for the warrant.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry. I missed that one. Martha, in the past, has been our alternate. She's got the iPad, and we have worked out a system. So unless anyone else wishes to nominate somebody, I would nominate Martha.
Second.
Great. Okay, so Laura, voting?
Aye.
Yeah.
Jill?
Aye.
Martha? Oh, you don't vote for yourself. Jan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, Martha. Okay, so going down to our subcommittees now, we've got Policy that I've described. Central Office Budget is a committee that works, I believe, every year for a matter of weeks. Jan, can you speak to this one a little bit?
Yeah, no, it's, years ago, it was a little bit more work because we were trying to find a good system. But in the last several years, I've done it, and it's been done in two meetings. And Giovanna presents such a complete and absolute budget for us to vote on that it's not really very much work to do that on that committee.
And Jan, did I hear you say that you've been working on that committee, correct?
I have done that the last several years, yes.
Okay. All right, the next committee is Negotiations. And am I understanding correctly that Mort is staying on as that? But we would still have somebody from the current committee?
So we planned, Betsy, to keep the team together because, you know, we did have negotiations. We probably had four meetings already, and we're ready to get started. We're hopeful to get started here within a week or so. So that's one of the pieces of the negotiations. The other piece is the Central Office Budget. And I think that can be certainly somebody different.
Okay, so we're gonna keep Mort on as Negotiations. And I imagine we will have him join our meetings when we need to be updated on that.
Exactly right. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go ahead right now and nominate Mort for the Negotiations Committee. I need a second.
Second.
Great, and so then, all in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Mort was also on our Transportation Committee. I think, was he? You are, you are, Martha?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're frozen on my screen, Martha, so I'm just hearing.
Oh, you know why I'm here? I'm back. I was just looking at the other sheet.
No problem. Martha, do you want to take a second to talk about transportation?
Yeah, I, when I first came on board, Laura, that seemed, I was actually taking somebody's place who was not like you are. And it was very, it was an easy committee to be on at the time because we weren't in the middle of negotiations. We did spend quite a bit of time, two years ago, negotiating for another contract with another company. And that's how we ended up with Cape Collaborative. That particular year or so was really quite busy. And it would be a good committee to start on at this point because I think we're pretty happy with the collaborative. Is that right, Tom?
Yes.
Probably won't be doing any changes for a while. It's a good, fairly simple committee to be on where, once a year, you might meet to talk about bus routes. Unless there's another contract negotiation going on that gets tricky. So I am happy to serve on it again, but I'm also happy to turn it over to anybody else who would want to do it.
Would it be maybe a tough year since transportation's gonna be so tough? I mean, obviously, that's one of the harder parts of going back to school this year is transportation. So I don't know, Tom, if it's gonna be taken care of by your eight-person subcommittee or if it would be something that would be ongoing during the year.
Yeah, that's one of our, one of our protocols, is the busing through the task force. So we're dealing with that right now, actually.
Okay, so, you know, just wanted to think about, Laura, I think, you know, if you're interested, let us know. I want to go through the whole list so you can see, and then maybe we can hear from you to see which ones you might be interested in. We will know who to nominate. I think all of us are willing to continue where we were, but we also want to open doors for you.
Okay, great.
Health and Wellness, I believe, was vacant. I think Jan had done it in the past. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
It is, but then they started meeting Tuesday afternoons, which is the only time I can't do it.
So can you talk a little bit, Jan, about that committee?
Yeah, it's kind of exciting. You meet with the school nurse, essentially. And usually, also, the physical. I'm, all I can think of is therapist, you know, the gym teacher. And we met a few times with the farmer and the school lady. I've forgotten her name.
The farmer Stephanie.
Yeah. And then we've met district-wide to talk about vaping and some of the bigger, bigger issues and instituting learning lectures and pamphlets for parents and so forth. It's a very nice thing to be part of, actually.
Jan, remind me, how often does that meet?
Every other month, maybe.
Okay, and Mary Beth, do you want to add something?
I do. I'm just thinking, I know that Laura likes to substitute for the school. And that meeting happens at 2:15, just following the school day, so just as an FYI.
Good.
Great, thank you. The next committee on the list is the Substance Abuse Task Force. Martha, would you like to speak to that?
I would. We are sort of in limbo right now because we have a new person who has come on in place of our Student Services. I don't remember her title, but she was, Anne Coretti, was a dynamo, and she headed that committee. We talked about the issues around both behavioral health and habitual behaviors, like of substances, basically. And also, what happens to kids who have that kind of thing going on in their homes and their families. We ended up enacting, having some curriculum be adopted by the schools, so the Second Step Program. We also, well, I think we met once a month, pretty much. And we were in the process of rethinking our mission and what we were gonna be doing from here on out. And Dr. Coretti, well, first, we had, Dr. Coretti was retiring, and then we had COVID, and we didn't have any meetings during that period at all. I have not yet met the new person, and I'm not sure what he or she is gonna be doing with the committee. But it's a really interesting committee to be on, for sure. So we were working with the administration and in tandem with the administration in terms of choosing priorities.
Thank you, Martha. So I'm gonna take a pause here, and I'm gonna just review the subcommittees. So we have Policy, Central Office Budget, Negotiations, Transportation, Health and Wellness, and Substance Abuse. Laura, do you have any preferences to be nominated for?
I mean, Health and Wellness sounds great to me. I have a master's in Physical Education and Health. It was a long time ago, but that's certainly a passion of mine. So, I mean, I'd love, if that's an option, that, or even Transportation, if that's needed. But Health and Wellness would be my first, I believe, choice.
All right, so I open nominations for Policy Subcommittee.
I nominate.
Okay, and I'm happy to accept the nomination, if anybody seconds it. It looks like we got between Martha and Jan. Thanks. Okay, and so we'll go ahead and vote, starting with Laura?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
And Jan?
Aye.
Great, so Betsy will continue as Policy. Ooh, I'm speaking in the third person. Central Office Budget, I would like to nominate Jan, if she would want to continue.
Sure.
I second.
All right, from Jill, thank you. So let's vote on that. Laura?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Yeah, aye.
And an aye from.
Aye. Yeah.
Okay, so thank you, Jan, for taking that on again. We're on, we're skipping Negotiations because that's Mort. We've already voted. Transportation, looking for a nomination.
If, I don't know how busy Laura is, if she's willing to do that as well, or I can do it. I don't know. If she's too busy. But I think the more things you can do, Laura, the more you'll feel a part of the group, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, I could, I could do that.
Just also, Laura, to mention that sometimes we do take on a few things, and if we end up feeling overloaded, it is a discussion that you can bring up at the committee. And we can make rearrangements. So, you know, if you're willing to take it on and be nominated now, certainly, if it becomes overwhelming, we can, we can, we can work through that.
Okay, yeah, sure, I'll take it.
Okay, so with that, I would like to nominate Laura for the Transportation Committee.
I second.
Great, and so we'll vote. There's an aye for me. Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
And Jan? Great, thank you so much, Laura, because now I'm going to nominate you for Health and Wellness. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and so I'm in favor, aye. Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the.
Betsy, I do have one question, and I'm afraid I'll forget it.
Okay.
Tom, are we keeping the Strategic Planning Task Force in, in terms of being able to review at the end of the year? What is the plan for that?
So right now, I plan to have a conversation with the Strategic Plan people in terms of our thoughts about opening up, when do we open up with our initiative? And so we're gonna keep that group together, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, so now, for the Substance Abuse Task Force, I would like to nominate Martha.
Second. Second.
Great, so all in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm getting so mixed up with this.
Yeah.
I'm not supposed to vote. For yourself, or do you not vote for yourself? Okay, so then we have, and I would be an aye on that, Ann, sorry. So now we have three committees to consider. We have the Cape Cod Collaborative. Jill, would you speak to that for a moment?
Sure, I've been on the collaborative for many years. The collaborative deals with services and needs for all of the school committees on the Cape and even some off the Cape. I've been a good fit and match for this. I'd like to continue to do it. I have a special needs background in education, so I have the experience and the education as well. It meets in Osterville, the second Wednesday of every month, but usually not during the summer.
Great. The PTA Liaison attends the monthly meetings. I have generally done that. I'm happy to continue. However, if somebody else was interested, I'm happy to leave that. But that is a meeting that, it did get a little complicated for me because they started alternating when they met. And as, I'm a teacher, but I work in Dennis Yarmouth, and our dismissal time was after the meeting started. So I could attend the evening meetings when it was that one. Mary Beth was awesome in providing me the information when I did have to miss a meeting. And then lastly, there's School Council Liaison. Jan, was that you?
No.
Oh.
I did it, yeah.
Okay, Martha, want to speak to School Council?
Yes, I loved it. It was never contentious. It was always friendly. It was a very, it is. It's a very relaxing group. It's headed by Mary Beth, and it's wonderful. I mean, I would love to stay on it, but Laura, if you felt you'd like to do it, it's an incredibly friendly group of people and just delightful, very thoughtful, good mix of people on it. So if it's something you'd like to do, let me know.
Okay.
Okay, and I just, it looks like Mary Beth wants to add something.
Thank you. I just want to also say that this year, we will be working on our new school improvement plan that will be in conjunction with what is in our Strategic Plan and our Technology Plan for the district. So there'll be quite a bit of work, but it's really rewarding work.
So not to put you on the spot, Laura, but just in the way of welcoming you, do either of, any of those three appeal to you?
I mean, School Council sounds great, but I don't want to take it, Martha. Can you, I mean, is it, is just one of us does it? Is that, that's for sure, okay. I mean, Martha, what do you?
I'm happy to stay on it, especially since the Strategic Plan work will go into it this year. So it does make sense.
Yeah, so I mean, if everybody's.
You are busy.
What's that?
You're pretty busy. You don't want to overdo.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good unless it's needed, for sure, yeah.
And I'd like to suggest that Jill stay with the collaborative, having so much experience with.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking for a nomination for the collaborative. I might have heard Jan say.
Yes, I nominated Jill.
I second it.
Great, and so we'll vote. Laura?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Jan?
Yes.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, so thank you, Jill, for continuing.
Thank you, Jill.
Happy to do so, thank you.
Looking for nominations for PTA Liaison.
If you can do it, Betsy, that would be great.
I'm happy to continue unless anybody else, you know.
Okay, I second it.
Did we get a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I got distracted.
Jill, second.
Yes? Jill?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jan? Okay, I will accept PTA Liaison. And lastly, School Council Liaison, a nomination?
I nominate Martha.
I'll second that. And we'll vote. Laura?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Jan?
Yes.
And myself is an aye. All right. Reorganization is complete. Thank you to everyone. Oh, wait.
Union 54.
Union 54, sorry. So typically, Union 54 are, when we go to a joint meeting and we have voting responsibilities, it's generally the chair and the co-chair. Are there rules about this? I don't. I just knew that I waited a while before I became a voting.
The chair has to do it, I'm quite sure.
Okay, so chair is definitely one. Co-chair.
Chair and the Vice Chair, yeah.
And the Vice, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Vice, sorry. And so who, Jill or Jan, would you like to be the third voting member? And then we'll just.
I'm happy to continue in this. I've been up at Union 54 all along.
Okay. I mean, I think we all have, well, at the point, right? It's, but you know what happens, Laura, if one of us can't make a meeting, then you're called to vote. You still go to the meeting. We can still confer to make, we confer before we vote so that we usually have consensus. So why don't we put Jan and Laura as our alternates?
Sounds good.
But just going backwards, Jan, is this something you'd really want? Because I can.
No.
Okay, because it's just, you know, if and when I go back to the school accreditation work, you know, it works well for, you know, I'm already scheduled for a joint school committee meeting. You know what I'm saying? Since the Union 54 piggybacks with that, because it's been hard for me to accept another time commitment.
And that's a good slot for you, of course.
Okay, just checking in with you, Jan, just want to make sure.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Ann, do you think you have everything, everything you need? Okay, great. All right, then, let me go to my agenda. So my chair's report was basically going to be welcoming Laura. We really appreciate the fact that you were willing to run on a write-in campaign that happened very quickly. But feedback from people who know you was so positive and supportive that we are really, I just want to extend a welcome to you.
Thank you. I'm excited. Thank you.
Great, and are there members that wish to speak at this point? Jill?
Yes, information for Laura. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees has something called Charting the Course. And it's a special online program for new members. So if you, if you're not already aware of it, are you? Okay.
I am. I actually registered for all my classes last, or all the things last night.
Oh, fantastic. Good for you. And how nice it's online, and you don't have to drive anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, there's like six days of courses that I registered for last night, so.
Great, good for you, and thanks again for coming aboard.
I love it, Laura. Laura, you're young, and you do your homework. I like it.
Thanks. I learned a lot. In school.
Okay, any other members speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to Citizens Speak. Hearing none, I'm going to move on to Priority Business Administrator's Report, and we will start with Mary Beth. Good morning, Mary Beth.
Morning, everyone. Lovely to see you. I have a few things to report on, the first being the parent survey that I talked about at the last meeting, relative to our emergency remote learning. We had 29 responses, and we had 28 narrative responses. And by and large, people were very pleased with the well-paid elementary school staff. One of the things is, I appreciated the varied learning topics. The West teachers were incredible and are doing an amazing job with two exclamation points. You know, there was another comment relative to it being a lot for working parents. And the two other pieces were wanting to have more of a set schedule and longer synchronous learning opportunities, so more face-to-face, typical schedule of a school day. So of course, all of those things are being taken into account as we work on our three plans. Next, part of the task force with creating the three plans for the state for in-person, hybrid, and remote is that each school is to create their own task force. So I have my first task force, West Task Force, meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30. And it consists of Joanne Anderson, being a K teacher, Lisa Holmes, the technology teacher and subject coordinator, Kristin Francis, school psychologist, Claudia, our school nurse, Paul McHugh, our head custodian, Laura Hansen, my secretary to be there to take notes, and of course, me. So in addition to that, we also, the elementary principals had a meeting with our new Special Ed Director, Director of Student Services, Mary Buchanan. We met with her because we also have to have a focus plan on the special education population. So that work has begun as well. The Summer Reading Program was developed in conjunction with the town public libraries, and the theme this year is Imagine Your Story. The goal is to provide books that foster an interest in imagination, whether it's exploring a fairy tale, mythology, poetry, or fantasy novels. Our summer school, we have two. We have the Extended School Year Summer School. Those are for students who have that in their individualized education plan. And the Extended School Year, we call it ESY, began on July 6th, and that runs through April 13. Pardon? Pardon Jan?
You said April.
I did.
Through August, yeah.
It's starting in April. July 6th through August 13th.
There you go.
And our summer school for general ed students as well as students who do have special needs services but do not have extended school year in their IEP. That is happening, that started this week, July 13th, and that too runs until August 13th. We have a total of 21 students enrolled. Nine of those students are in-person and 12 are remote, and I have eight staff members that are leading that work. Professional development, NOSA is offering tiered levels of remote learning PD for educators. And they're in six tiered levels. Level one is for basic skills with Google Suite. And level, it goes all the way up to level five being advanced Google Suite and level six being project-based learning. My own summer PD happens to be a three-part series with Cognia, and they are the publishers of MCAS. And they have addressing gaps in learning through curriculum alignment, which was last week. This week, it's on formative assessment, and the following week is on differentiated instruction. And another that I'm doing is through our Second Step program. They have created a toolkit for principals to lead your school-wide SEL K to five. So within that, lessons are taught by the classroom teacher and the child protection units are taught by the school psychologist. The toolkit includes newsletter information for staff and families and student worksheets that align with the Second Step language and skills that they're learning. So that, that's a new sort of component for our Second Step program. The other requirement by DESI and MassDPH was to provide PPE training for all people that would be working in-person this summer. And Claudia, our school nurse, had provided that, and so it was an hour and a half of virtual training a couple of weeks ago, and she did an excellent job with that. And lastly, we had $445 left in our USDA community composting grant. And so Mrs. Croson is using that remaining funding for a heavy-duty wheelbarrow, six shovels, a compost kilometer, and two compost aerators. Any questions?
Just a comment, the well-planned and organization in terms of, you know, meeting teachers' needs during this, you know, remote learning is huge and there are many different levels and people are at different levels with it. So I applaud your approach to the tiered levels, allowing teachers to sort of have that choice of where they need to go next. It just seems like you're, what you described in the professional development was extremely comprehensive, so. Great work, Mary Beth.
The goal is that all educators by the end of the school year are proficient up to the level four.
Great. Any other comments or questions for Mary Beth? Okay, I believe we are up to you, Tom. You have a report for us.
Okay, so I'll start by saying that throughout the summer break here, I am in regular meetings with the Commissioner of Education, the superintendents on a weekly basis on the Cape, and Tom Scott, who heads up the superintendent's association with the partnership with the Board of Education. So those meetings are intense at times and, and in many cases are helpful to bring some clarity to what's happening. And so let me touch base with a couple of issues that are important. We've been pushing out to the school board members, the staff, and our parents throughout the district. Each week, a TV production that I put together with the studio at the high school. And, and, and I'm pleased to tell you that we're averaging over 1,800 hits a week. And, and, and people of, of course, are anxious to understand what's happening. And of course, the million-dollar question that we hear about every day is, so what's the plan? And what are we doing in the fall? So let me, let me start by saying that, as you know, we create a task force, we actually created two, but the working task force is made up of myself and Keith Golly, Mary Ellen Reed, who's the lead nurse in the district, Carol Forgione from our HR department, Giovanna with our finances, of course. And Mary Buchanan has joined us as a new student services director, and she has been probably three weeks now in with us, and so she's, she's off to a great start. And we're waiting for our tech director. We have made an offer, and I believe it's, she's signed the contract, but I haven't seen it, so I'll wait until I have it in my hands. But we're very excited about both Mary and, and our new tech director joining us. She'll be potentially joining us on the 20th of the month. So let me, let me tell you what the task force has been up to and where its focus has been. And first and foremost, we were focused on personal protection equipment. And right out of the, the beginning, that was a very, very important part of this process to understand what equipment we needed to keep our staff safe and our students safe going forward. And I would say at least three or four full days were involved in getting that figured out and ordered. And even down to what are we going to be doing relative to the inventory as it arrives. And I'm pleased to tell you that all, all the orders are out. We were particularly interested in knowing who had supply and who didn't have supply so that we could have some assurance that this equipment was going to be coming in on time. We have ordered on a three-month basis. So this equipment that we're ordering will get us out three months. We are concerned that with the changing guidelines from various groups that we are listening to, that you can make mistakes and they can be costly. And an example would be of a colleague who was on the other side of the Cape very early on. As we started our work, there was a course discussion about everyone would have to have their temperature taken. And that no longer is the guidance from the state at this point. And unfortunately, the superintendent purchased $40,000 worth of equipment for that purpose and more than likely won't be using it. So, and, and that's why that example gives you some understanding of why we want to go three months at a time, to make sure that we're current and it's, it's, because these guidelines are changing all the time. And I, I had a brief conversation with Martha relative to the three-foot distance from the commissioner and the CDC being at six feet right now, and I'll talk a little bit more in depth about that. So here are some of the things that continue to be worked on. I can tell you and will be sending you a copy of these, that today there is a parent survey that we have created that's going out for very, very important information that we believe we need to understand what makes sense going forward from a parent's standpoint. And it's very in-depth, and that will be out today. We're also sending out a transportation survey. And as you can imagine, we want to capture some understanding from parents about their thoughts on putting your child on a bus and, and will they be driving their sons and daughters to school and so forth? So that's going out today. And a staff survey, in-depth staff survey that is trying to capture a number of important pieces of data that we believe we need going forward to, to work with our union. Mark and Anne have been meeting with me on a, on a weekly basis for multiple hours. And as you all know, we are a union operation and we have a contract that we have to operate from. So that can be tricky at times. And, but they have been fantastic to work with, and it's working very well to this point. The surveys are out. We need the data to come back in. As Mary Beth had just alluded in her report, all of our building principals have been charged, and the task force put together a document of seven or eight pages of what we believed to be key information that Mary Beth and the principals needed to capture to begin to move forward with the development at the individual buildings relative to the three models that we're dealing with. Students coming back into the building, students staying out completely in terms of remote, and then the hybrid blended model as the third. We're expected to pull all of these plans together across our district, and we're shooting to have them up to the commissioner. The commissioner will be gathering these plans statewide. And we hope to have ours up there on the 24th of July. And so yesterday, for instance, we had an opportunity as a task force to hear from the principals, and they presented their models for questions and suggestions. And we'll be doing that once, once again in the days to come to begin to finalize some of those, those plans. We also have been working on protocols that we think are essential going forward for the community, the parents, the staff, the know. And the first one that I'll mention is a health protocol, because we're focused on keeping everybody healthy in this process. Staff, students, and potentially people who come into the building. And that's to be determined going forward. We're also working on a cleaning protocol. And I have met three times with all of the head custodians in separate meetings. And I plan to meet with two of them later this morning to keep moving forward in terms of being able to, to describe what our, our protocols are relative to cleaning and disinfectant of, of our buildings on a daily basis. We also are looking at, in many of these, these subjects, what type of training program do we need for our staff? We are interested to monitor the commissioner's discussion about the possibility of school districts needing more time for the training. And has floated the idea that possibly, it has not been agreed upon at this point, but possibly we would see a 177-day school year. And those three days, remember, we typically have 180 days, would be made available for training of staff before the opening of school. Now, that hasn't been agreed upon, it hasn't been approved. But we see that as a really important piece because we have a lot of training to do with our staff to get ready for some type of opening. We're also now working with our parent advisory committee. Last Thursday night, I had a great conversation with 22 parents that span all four of our ascending schools. And, and all grade levels were represented in that conversation. It both was good for me to hear directly from parents because sitting in the central office and the conference room working and all this almost feels like you're in a bunker and you need to hear their voices and you need to hear their thoughts. And so we're now going to hopefully be working with them on a weekly basis as we can get information from them directly, and they were, they were excellent. And that meeting lasted almost two hours, almost till 10 o'clock at night. Communication, we are really pleased with the work at the TV studio at, at the high school. They are reaching out to us on a weekly basis now to do the show. They prepare the, the production to go out. And we're, we're very, very pleased with the numbers of people who are getting on site to, to look at the presentation. The other piece is that we're working on the busing plan. And this is an interesting issue for us from a number of directions, particularly in terms of the safety for our bus drivers, the safety of students getting on the buses. At the region level, remember, the region is supposed to develop a plan by law that is able to pick up every student that attends the region, which means additional bus time and so forth. And we've, we've talked about the legislation that it might take to change that so that we might be able to shorten up some of our runs because we anticipate fewer students who will be riding the buses this coming year. So what we know is gathering all of this information that the soonest the commissioner wants any school district in the state of Massachusetts to announce their plan would be the first week in August. I am now working behind the scenes to see if we can, on Thursday of that week, I believe it's August 6th, I don't want to go public before I have a joint school committee meeting with all of the board members in the entire district. And, and so I'm tentatively, I'm talking to the chairs about the possibility over the next couple of days of, of that happening. But these are all tentative points relative to the plan. And quite honestly, the commissioner is thinking that things are changing daily in terms of the information we're receiving. And he is concerned, as I would be too, that we don't want to be flipping the plan multiple times because it could be confusing to parents in terms of what they can plan on going forward. Another interesting piece, because I dealt with a parent reaching out to me this morning on homeschooling, is that students, if we were to go back into the buildings and parents were not going to send their schools, their students to school, homeschooling is off the table necessarily at this point. And what I mean by that is that we have a responsibility to educate every student. And so one of the three models that both Mary Beth and I have described would be the method of reaching out to that student instead of homeschooling. So that's a, that's a little bit of a change because it was discussion that if you didn't come back, would they have to go to homeschooling? And, and the answer is no, they don't. So that's where we stand on that. So that's, that's quite a bit of information right there, and, and there's a lot of depth to it. So let me stop and take any questions the board members might have.
I have a question, Tom, about what you see in terms of staff cooperation. Is there, I mean, you read everything under the sun in the newspaper, and there's been a lot of Boston teacher talk about their being afraid and not wanting to come back in the classroom. What's the feel around here?
So there was very little chatter about your issue, Jan, that you're raising. And it is a huge, it's now a huge issue.
Yeah.
And for much of the summer, it has been a fantastic ride with Mark and Anne. And for Laura to know, Mark. And, and for Laura to know, Mark Matheson is the president of our union and Ann McConchie is the vice president. Mark asked, I don't think he minds me sharing this, even, you know, through the TV or to you and the board. He called me, I think it was Thursday or Friday, and he wanted to meet late afternoon. And I knew it wasn't going to be good. And, and Mark is working with presidents across the entire state relative to the union. And, you know, he, it was his responsibility, not necessarily his personal decision, but as the, as the, as the leader of the union, had to give me a five-page document that outlines some, some, some heavy lifting by the district in terms of how we potentially could move forward. And the issue could be a difference of opinion. We absolutely understand that we want safety for our staffs and for our kids and our families. This is an interesting piece and it came from the parent forum the other night, that there was a doctor who's in the emergency department and has dealt with the virus on, on many levels at, at the hospital. And he wanted to offer me some advice in terms of some of my challenges with, with people going forward. And he, he told me that your biggest concern and, and issue from a safety standpoint will be with the staff. And in our case, we've been able to retain our staff. And I say that we have a pretty high percentage of members who are getting up in their age. He also said that the next group to worry about would be our youngest students, pre-K up into first grade, because if you have prevention in place, sometimes it's very difficult for these students, being so young, to take advantage of it.
Right.
And now, these are his words we're about to share, but he, he felt with the middle school, high school kids, they're bulletproof. They, they, they're able to, I don't have to worry quite as much about those, those two pieces. And so it is about safety. And we're now, Mark will be coming in in a, in a short time and we're going back into discussions about this. And, and so you can see on the surface, these, these sounds like nice titles, but when you dig into, into the, the work that our custodians have to do, we, we get into very quickly air conditioning and air exchanging.
Sure.
And positive pressure and negative pressure and things like this. And it gets, it gets very complicated and, and, and it takes a lot of time to flush all of this out. It's just not normal things that we had done in the past. But you can see, we have the protocols and we have people working on this every day. And we're hopeful that when we present the plan, it makes sense to lots of people. The, the reason we have three plans is if we have to shift, for some reason, we have the plans in place.
Yeah.
And as Mary Beth alluded, that in some cases, having all those course offerings for our teachers. Now, the interesting thing is, we're not necessarily in a position where people can ask, ask for flex, flex days and just go do whatever they want this year. They're, they're, they're driven into these courses so that if we had to go remote, we would be better prepared technology-wise as, as an overall staff. And, and so it's very complicated. There are a lot of, a lot of issues. And I'm anxious to wa, watch whether the commissioner and the board of education can do some of the, the lifting on the negotiations from a state level versus every district having to negotiate individually with their own unions. And, but there's no question, you know, the, the, the union is beating the drum so, no question.
Yeah. I worry.
Other questions?
Martha? You're muted.
Okay, now I'm, I just have a quick one. I, I have a lot to say about that, but I'm not going to. But I do have a quick question, Tom. You said something and I didn't understand it. It's my problem, but just to clarify, are you saying that people will not be allowed to homeschool if they choose or that they don't have to?
I, I, so I think that if somebody wants to homeschool and they go through the process, they're more than welcome to.
Okay.
It does, what, what it doesn't mean though is because you're scared to send your kid to school, your only option is now the system saying to you, well, if you're not going to send him to school, you have to homeschool. That's, that's an option, Martha. Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back to the parent today that it looks like they're very serious and, and have a really interesting plan. I'll get the principal involved and we'll go through the steps for this family if they, if that's what they want to do to homeschool.
And just one comment. I have been following the numbers and what's happening in Barnstable County. And our county, the whole county, has moved from no change in COVID cases now to rising. It's light rising, it's light orange, it's not dark orange or red. But because of the summer influx, I'm concerned about seeing some changes closer to the beginning of the school year that we really need to be watching. And that's just a comment.
No, no, it's, I, 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 it was very clear to me that, that it wasn't, wasn't going to get better when I saw the number of people here on the 4th of July. And so Mary Ellen Reed is outstanding at what she does. She's very talented. And she is in connection with all four health agents and they meet on a regular basis. So having her on this task force has been a blessing really. So, but I, I, I hear what you're saying, Martha, I would agree with you.
Any other comments or questions for Tom? Mary Beth?
I just wanted to make a comment that I shared with the administrative team yesterday, is that we are now getting inquiries at West for families who have summer homes in Wellfleet or families who live in Wellfleet that are considering moving to Wellfleet from larger cities. So we have the potential of families coming in from California, New York, Connecticut, and Washington DC. So I just wanted to share that information that we might have an influx of some students from out of the state.
Thank you. Jill?
To piggyback on what Mary Beth just said, I was speaking to a family that rents in my neighborhood every year and they asked me some pretty serious questions. They are definitely considering moving from New York and highly likely into Wellfleet and they have two young children. So I certainly was confidently the ambassador of all the good things about West. I want to applaud Tom and of course, Mary Beth, but Tom, the communication and the different modes of communication have been outstanding and, you know, hitting all the different nails on the head and all the variables. So I want to thank you for that. And I'm so glad we have all these surveys that are going out, which will give you more information. And one more random comment is, I have no idea, you know, if and when I will be returning to my work, but in the meantime, we're having tons of conference calls and webinars and 57 pages of new protocol and whatnot. And I went ahead and already ordered my face shield. But just a point of information and kind of humorous because we need it. So since I'm considered an independent contracted consultant, you know, we don't get any benefits. And there was the question of, are we going to get reimbursed for our PPE? The, but we are. But in the meantime, before I knew that, I ordered the cheapest face shield on Amazon. And when it came in, I thought, this is what I get, the cheapest one, it's kind of blurry. Uh-oh, you know, like, what am I going to do? And it turns out that a retired practical, nurse practitioner friend of mine said, maybe, did you check, it has some protective film? And I said, no, it doesn't. It did, but there was no tab. There was no tab to peel it off. It was so sticking to the face shield. And I've been keeping my nails really short so I could keep cleaning my hands really well, you know? So I couldn't even barely peel the darn thing off. So if somebody says, oh my God, these shields are glossy and blurry.
That would probably be.
Or somewhat opaque. It could be. And, and yeah, and I know it's happened to other people too. So just my own public service announcement for my own Lucille Ball moment.
I thought you were going to say you forgot to take your glasses, put your glasses on when you used it.
But I gotta say though, even with the protective film off, I'm glad I'm practicing with it now because my computer tablet that I use for work, I mean, between the glasses fogging up and the face shield, I was getting poached egg, poached egg eye syndrome, you know, with the different angles, you know, before getting some eye fatigue.
Yeah.
I'm glad I could make people laugh.
Thank you for that moment.
And you helped us.
We all need that humor. Are there any other questions for Tom? Any other comments or questions?
I guess I have one. I'm sure it's been talked about. Is, is part of the planning though, and I hate playing the what-if question, but if there is an outbreak of a school, I mean, is that a part of the planning? And will we, I mean, what, you know, what happens then?
Yeah. So we're, we're actually within the plan. It's, the state's term is an isolation room, but we call it SPA, a special place. And, and so we have all protocols relative to, to how that space will be used, how that space is cleaned, how is it ventilated? And then the procedures in terms of communication with, of course, all our parents.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. And, and so that's, that's really, Mary Ellen Reed is, 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 that's why we have such a, such a person on our task force for all those issues. Yeah, so, and the, the interesting piece, of course, is, is within the, the cleaning world is, is the difference between cleaning and disinfecting.
Yes.
And they're two totally different processes. And so that's where the, the meetings with the, the head custodians has been so helpful. And, and even to have continuity and consistency with equipment that we think is, is, is needed for, for the sort of work that we have to do. We, we are probably moving more like a region than ever before because we want to make sure that nobody gets picked off in the process for not doing certain things, that we have continuity and consistency in all our schools with many of these issues. Thank you, Laura.
Great. And I just have one thing, I, I don't want to open a can of worms, so if it's too much, you know, certainly we can process this another time. But I, I do want to start by saying the communication has been outstanding. I love getting the Vimeo's, I can listen to them in my car while I'm driving, just to really keep updated. But I'm wondering if everyone in our district speaks English and can read so much print? And so are there any efforts, I mean, do we have the need for translations? And, and how is that happening for all our families?
So it's, it's, it's interesting because it, it wouldn't be just our, our non-speaking English people, but we have some people in our district who are deaf. And so we're working on this, it's, it's, we, we, we are working on it at this moment in our office to see how we can get that done. And I, I, it, it's, again, if, if that were you, what would you want to have happen? Now, I must say that we're, we're, we're overwhelmed in some cases with the work, the body of work that we're talking about here. But we need to do it. And so Ann is, and, and I, she's going to be working on it today of how we can pull that off going forward. And so that, thank you for the question. Two weeks ago, I wouldn't have known the answer, but now this, this is where we're going, we're, we're going at it, so.
I, I appreciate your thoughts on that. So anything else from anybody before we move on? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the mask resolutions. There are two resolutions and I believe we need a vote on them, is that correct?
Yes, because, well, the other boards that have done in front of you want to, to, to register their votes with, with your association so they know the support there is for it, so.
Okay, so we'll start with the resolutions on COVID-19 expenses and the response to social, economic, and racial justice in our communities. So that's two. So the first resolution is the COVID-19 state funding. Do we need discussion? Do people want to talk about this first?
I want to talk about the other one, but not this one.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so that would be Jill motioning and, and Jan seconding. So again, I'll just do a roll call. Laura, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, and Jill?
Yes.
And Martha?
Yes.
And Jan?
Yes.
And I, I for myself as well. Ann? Okay, so then the next resolution is the school committee anti-racism resolution. Would we like to discuss first before the motion? Okay, Jan, do you, would you like to start?
Yes, I, I don't know if anybody else will have trouble with this. And I would like to think I am as anti-racist as anybody, but I can handle the phrasing of the last sentence in this because I guess I cannot handle that in the negative, that all lives cannot matter. I just, that sentence just jars me, that all lives cannot matter until black lives matter. It's a beautiful phrase, but it just, um, every life matters. And to say all lives cannot matter, I mean, I, I just cannot live with that particular phrasing. So I am either going to abstain or vote against it, so I just wanted to let you know why.
Okay, thank you for, I'm sharing your, your opinion. Martha, would you like to respond?
I would, Jan. I, I, that jarred me too. And I am a, a strong proponent of Black Lives Matter. And generally speaking, I do think that right now that is more important than any other lives because so many black lives have been taken for being black. People have died because they've been black. So I do think that's important, but I did find those words, no lives matter, jarring. And my question is, would you feel okay if we could edit it? You know how I love to do that and take those few words out and just say, simply, I keep losing it because it's on a different screen, acknowledges that black lives matter? Just take out that all lives cannot.
And I could even say, until black lives matter, we cannot say that all lives matter. But I just, I, it's just to say that all lives cannot matter is just wrong to me. I, I, so if we said until black lives matter, we cannot say that all lives matter. That's okay. Or any way you want to put it, but I just cannot live with it this way.
Understood.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to comment on this, on the suggested revision by Jan? Any more discussion?
How did you put?
I'm fine, I'm fine with the revision. I think that, you know, when we are voting on something, it is a matter of policy and that policy needs to speak from, you know, a consensus of everybody who's putting it forth. And, you know, I hear Jan's thinking on that and I think that simple revision certainly still reflects. And I think that simple revision certainly still reflects what the intent was from the first author, um, yet, uh, makes, you know, it doesn't, I think it just serves, uh, the purpose that will allow Jan to be able to vote for it. Does anybody else want to speak out on that? So hearing none, um, do we have a motion to, um, vote on this for, uh, with the revision that Jan suggested? Jan, do, um, and do you need to hear it one more time before or do you have it? Okay, great, you have it. So Martha, something to say?
No, I was going to move, so move.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I move that we, um, accept the revision and accept the policy, uh, with the revision, the resolution with the revision.
I second.
Great, we'll go a roll call vote then, Laura?
Yeah.
Uh, Jill?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
Jan?
Yes, and thank you for your consideration of that.
And I'm an aye as well, Ann. Um, so I have a clarifying question.
Thank you for bringing it up, Jan.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jan.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom, I have a clarifying question. Um, so what happens next? And is this something I'm supposed to do?
No, we'll send up something up to your association of, of our action on those resolutions.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, okay, so scooting back to the agenda. We are now on reports and information. I believe Jill, you had a Cape Cod collaborative meeting, did you not?
Yes, it was on June 10th at 5:15 and it was almost for three hours.
Oh, wow.
There was an appointment of officers. Uh, we chose to, uh, have John Fenari as, uh, from Falmouth as the chair. Judy Lindahl, our Judy Lindahl, uh, from Eastham as the vice chair. Um, a lot of discussion on the budget and the spending plan, uh, of course, with everything topsy-turvy these days, um, a lot of discussion on the expenditures and likely modifications coming up. Uh, we voted for a 2.8% increase in rates, uh, which encompasses a lot of the service rates. Uh, the STAR program of, which for Laura's benefit are the younger children, um, that are, um, met better, uh, having their own classrooms, um, for whatever reasons. It's more challenging to integrate them into a classroom. So the STAR program of the younger children for the fall, right now, there's a commitment of at least 47 children. Um, so that's projected. And Waypoint, which is the alternative high school program, there are 56 students projected for now. Of course, the collaborative, um, as we all know, deals, you know, they're a nonprofit, uh, deals with the transportation. And since so many school systems do have, whether it's special ed buses or regular ed buses, um, there of course is going to be a lot of modifications on buses as well as adjustments. And, um, being on the transportation committee, um, you know, the collaborative really is going to be doing the real nuts and bolts since it's their buses and their drivers, if you will. Plymouth Public School, uh, is what's kind of called an adjunct member. They don't vote because they're not a Cape district, but they've been very active and they have a lot of commitments, um, in ratio as far as, um, Waypoint. Uh, collaborative handbooks before the COVID, uh, issues, policy and procedures manual was being reviewed, the parent and student manuals, the employee transportation, healthcare. We went ahead, that's all been updated. There will be separate guidance coming from the state, um, that will be kind of like an addendum on these, um, manuals. Uh, being the collaborative, uh, committee members vote on personnel. So there was a lot of personnel changes, some people leaving, some people coming. So we voted on lots of personnel recommendations. Uh, some happy news, Osterville Elementary School, where the STAR program is right now, and offices, uh, we just finished, or they just finished a 10-year lease of the collaborative with the building. And it looks like it will be renewed for another 10 years for that building. Uh, not, collaborative not having their own building, it's been somewhat of an issue in the past and continues to be of services and locations. So the town of Barnstable, the school committee and the school administration has blessed the collaborative to be there for another 10 years. So the only things that need to be ironed out at this point are some maintenance and renovation issues. That's it.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill? Jill, so happy to hear about Osterville, that is great. Um, okay, I'm just gonna run through, there's no preschool enrollment report. Um, I believe there is no PTA report. Strategic Plan is on hold for right now. Am I correct, Martha? No report from Strategic Plan.
Martha's not there anymore.
Oh, okay.
She's so unmuted too.
Oh, there she is.
I was here. I was looking at the agenda. There's no, nothing for that.
Okay, and substance abuse, mental health?
No, but I do have a question, if I may ask it. And that, Tom, I'm wondering if that group is, is going to stay together under, um, Mary Buchanan's leadership?
So, um, we've talked to Mary about that possibility. And, uh, we would at least like to get the group back together to see if they could come together with some strategic initiatives they would like to work on. And she's certainly more than willing to, to, uh, bring that group, you know, bring you back together. She's just trying to get her feet, as you can imagine, because she jumped right into the summer program. Uh, and, uh, and she's on the task force with us as well. So I would think in a, in a few weeks, she'll be reaching out to everybody to see if they want to get together. So.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I can't imagine everything, what a, what a year to take over, my gosh. Thank you.
Great. Um, the policy subcommittee is nothing to report right now. The wellness subcommittee, I'm guessing, nothing to report. And, um, I think we already agreed at the beginning of the summer that our meetings would really just be a form of communication. So I'm gonna bypass our future agenda items unless anybody.
Uh, yeah, I have, I have one that, um, Giovanna's patients, and she's been here and listening, but we didn't have any budgetary things, I guess, to talk about since last time we settled the end of the budget. But I would like next time to put into the agenda, um, some understanding of, first of all, how is the budget gonna work this year? When, you know, I, I think we're doing 1/12 budget until town meeting. But, um, you know, once we have town meeting, do we have to put new things in that budget that will take into consideration what the task force is planning for us? You know, I, I just, it's gonna be a, a tough year. And, um, one of the main things that a school committee does is finance the, the budget. And so I want to make sure we're on top of that.
But, so Jan, you're absolutely right. We're waiting right now. We're, we understand, we don't have a budget from, from, from the state. They're around this timeframe, I'm sure they're talking about it behind the scenes. But we need to understand, are they gonna touch things like, uh, uh, Chapter 70 and transportation?
Right.
And what type of funding is coming from the state to us? They say to us, they're backed up because they need the money from the federal government
Yeah.
to be able to supplement the state budgets. And so we didn't want to confuse people, but Giovanna is, is monitoring this very closely. She's done a great job for us. And we, we will absolutely, uh, have a robust conversation of our budget when it's clearer to us at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Great, and I will.
Is that okay, Beth?
No, that's fine. I took those notes down and I'm, when I meet with Tom before the next meeting, um,
Okay, thank you.
we'll plan for that. Great. Um, okay, so moving on to approval of minutes. Um, I do have one, um, revision to make. So at the very beginning, um, where it says chairs report, Ann, um, if you could write Pontius, Chair Pontius shared reflections on racial protest and read a statement that included this quote from MASK? Because I didn't read their whole statement. Um, and then you could end it after, um, that, where you have the quotation marks beginning it as school leaders. Um, I ended that quote after the word racism in the first paragraph. And you could just strike the rest. Does that make sense? Thank you. Does anybody else have any, um, comments or revisions to be made with the minutes?
No, as usual, very well done.
Okay, then looking for a motion for the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as corrected.
And I'll second that. All in favor, let's just raise our hands. Great, that's unanimous. And then, um, oh, I will just let you know that the bills have been paid. I, I did pay the last warrants for our shared commitments with the district and, um, the, uh, last for the year of Wellfleet. So that's all, um, we'll be getting that final report, I'm, I'm imagining in a couple of weeks. Um, so motion for adjournment?
So move.
Right, and a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Laura. And, um, so thanks, everybody. And, you know, we'll get the agenda for the next meeting out to you guys via email and the Zoom links. And feel free to reach out if you have any trouble connecting or, um, uh, anything to say.
Yeah, that PDF doesn't work for me.
Yeah, you can't really, some links won't work in a PDF. So it is easiest to zoom.org and plug in your join meeting and then plug in your information.
Yeah.
Because sometimes a PDF will not, you won't get all links.
It won't let you click, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Right, but, but at least we get the information. You get the, you get the, um, meeting ID and the password there.
You did that, yeah, thank you.
All right, everybody. Have a good care.
Everyone be safe.
Yep, likewise.